There Doug.
Obviously don't let go.
That's great shirt.
Just kidding. He heard that.
Well, he heard it, but we can't hear him.
You've got 10 seconds.
Okay.
We can't hear him.
Yep. They're so worried. Nice shirt Doug, don't let him say anything.
I'm surprised you canceled.
Are you gonna take your mask off?
I might, yeah.
I know, I was surprised too.
Look at I'm keeping my fingers. I might put it on a little later too.
Yeah, me too.
And for Mark, for tomorrow.
Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Rochester City Council of December 20th, 2021. Last one of 2021. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Uh, here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, does, uh, Mr. Gould have to?
Yes, proper protocol would be to disclose that, uh, he is attending virtually, um, because of medical reasons and to identify the city, uh, in which you are in at the moment.
Yep, I have, uh, COVID, I'm in quarantine in my basement on Second Street in Rochester, Michigan.
All right, very good. And thank you for being here, being in other weather, and we hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, sir.
Um, next, would you all please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on the last night, our last council meeting of the year. First, we're going to public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. Brian, is there anybody?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Brian. Okay, so first, we have a, a proclamation for Elena Campbell's retirement from the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. So Lena's with us tonight. We have a proclamation for her, so I'd just like to read it briefly. Whereas the Rochester City Council wishes to express their sincere appreciation to Elena Campbell for her dedication to the Rochester community during her tenure as President of the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Elena has a passion for representing small business owners in our area, and she worked tirelessly over the years to create business growth and ensure the long-term success of our business community. Whereas from the Sunrise Pinnacle Awards to the Hometown Christmas Parade and every activity in between, the Chamber hosted countless impeccably executed events under Elena's leadership to support and celebrate our community. And whereas Elena is always engaged, energetic, enthusiastic, and has been a tremendous asset to the Chamber and to the City of Rochester. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Rochester City Council hereby recognize and thank Elena Campbell for her service to the Rochester community as President of the Rochester Regional Chamber, and we wish her all the success in her future's endeavor. And I would just like to also say, I want to especially thank Elena for her work during COVID. When, when that hit, they really, I think, mobilized the Chamber, um, to really become involved and to help businesses and to help businesses get loans and have seminars. And I know I was part of some of those calls and Brian Barnett, but they invited all kinds of experts in. I mean, those were dire times for a lot of businesses downtown. I thought the Chamber really stepped up and, and did a great job, so I want to thank you for that. So Elena, why don't you, uh, come on up?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Say this is him first, give this. I'm short.
Do you want me to stand next to you? You'll feel tall.
All right, there we go, and yes.
Why don't you, if you would like, why don't you say, say a few words?
Thank you so much, everyone, I really appreciate it. It has been truly an honor, um, to serve this community. I have to tell you, Sherry Heine, who was my predecessor, who you all know, was one of my mentors. I started at the Orion Area Chamber in 2010, and I remember the first time I met with Sherry to ask her advice. I was new to the Chamber world, I didn't know what I was doing. And Sherry was so gracious, and never in a million years did I dream that I would actually work at the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. So it's just been a great pleasure, all of you, Blaine, Stuart, and all of you, I have gotten to know so well, and you have been huge supporters of the Chamber, and we really appreciate that. And I just thank you, and I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. I'm still a member of the Chamber, my ice cream shop is still a member of the Chamber. So now I just get to come to events and have fun. So thank you.
Thank you. And just also welcome Marilyn Trent, who's the Rochester, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board Chair, and Elena's husband, Mike, so.
And, and Vince?
Oh, Vince, right, sorry, I didn't. Couldn't see you over there.
The new board chair.
The chair in 2022.
The new board chair.
Right, the new board chair, and welcome. And, and Maggie, Maggie Bobbitts is the new chairperson, so we'll look forward to working with all you. Next, we have the audit presentation. Mr. City Manager, do you want to set that up?
Yep, we have, Rena, uh, is online, if you want to say hi, and then Anthony, if you want to walk through your, your initial letter, uh, and then have her dive in.
Sure. Welcome Rena, welcome back.
Thank you.
Hey Rena, so Rena's our, uh, editor, auditor from, uh, PSLZ, and we have before you the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and what a year and roller coaster this has been. But with that, I know Rena's got a bunch of highlights she wants to touch and, and talk about tonight for the topics on the audit and what she reviewed, so I will pass that right over to her.
Thank you, Anthony, and good evening, everyone, it's nice to see everyone. The, however, virtually, the, um, once again, the, the city has received the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion. The, um, and also, the city has once again received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which, uh, the city has done for quite a few years now, but, um, it's, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's really, um, taking the financial statements to a higher level and, you know, a feather in the cap of the city, if you will. The, um, starting out with a few highlights, uh, once again, the, the property tax revenues increased this year, not because of military increases, but rather taxable values, which we're always very happy to report on. There was a 5.33% jump in taxable values this year, which I know we're all happy to see that. Uh, the year before, just to, uh, in, put in perspective, was 5.11%. Uh, that's, that's, 5% is a very healthy taxable value increase. I hope that you're, you know, I think that you'd be really pleased to see that. We, normal was usually about 2%, maybe 3% for Rochester, so a couple of years in a row of over 5% is, is great. The, um, uh, state year revenue, slight increase, um, and the, uh, really, the, the only negative we have are interest investment earnings this year, which we are all familiar with due to the economic conditions, uh, not through any investments that the, the city has. You've done a really nice job of investing and keeping very conservative with that. Uh, you earn very safe securities, um, so it was really just, you know, the economic times, uh, drastic sign, you know, drop in, uh, investment earnings this year. Hopefully, things will turn around in the, in the coming year. The city used up $240,000 of the general fund fund balance this year, which was planned, um, and you actually came in $336,000 under budget, even with that. Uh, and also, it, 240,000 down this year, but in the prior year, it was almost exactly 240,000 that you added to the general fund fund balance. The, um, also, general fund transferred out, uh, just under a million dollars to the local street fund for projects this year, so $927,000 of that, um, drop in the fund balance, uh, a portion of that was due to, uh, transfer to the streets. Uh, significant capital projects in 2021, uh, included the finishing up of the DPW campus. The year before, you had the, uh, the bond sale for that. You had some community house remodeling expenses and also, uh, you know, some city hall renovations. Debt this year, um, the big story was the $8,050,000 pension obligation bonds that the city issued. Um, and also, you added 409,000 in the state revolving fund loan draw, which is in the, in the water fund. The, um, that state revolving fund's at 2.5% interest, so that's really a great thing that you take advantage of, uh, to do, uh, water sewer projects. The, that pension bond, I must commend you, I mean, you got a phenomenal interest rate, uh, with that. That's about a 13-year bond, I believe. Um, the interest rates range from .28 to 2.2. So that's really a very good interest rate over those 13 years, um, to take advantage of that as well. Um, jumping to the water and sewer funds, um, wat- water sales, uh, increased this year. In the prior year, both years sewer and water dropped about 2% in, uh, revenues. Um, the, this year, you're up 12% in water and 4% in sewer. So, uh, just so you know, that wasn't a trend, that slight drop, uh, we're back up again. A lot of people working from home. Um, so I think that, that will be a trend for the near future. The, also, the parking fund, um, that's something we like to see it be operationally solvent and stand on its own. Uh, you did add $208,000 to the fund in 2021. Uh, 200 and some thousand in 2020 as well. However, um, the, the fund is still cash flow negative, um, negative $95,000 this year. That's because of the, the way it's accounted for in the, the parking fund is similar to how the water and sewer fund, uh, accounting, which is what we call full of crow accounting, like, like a, a, um, a business or company keeps their books. The, um, so that includes things like depreciation, um, but, uh, more significantly, the, in the parking fund is the debt that you have. So, for example, in 2021, the principal plus interest payment, uh, in the parking fund was $840,000 combined. Uh, so that's not insignificant. The, um, pension bonds, uh, so let's jump to the, uh, pension liability. The net pension liability actually increased $450,000 this year. The pension liability actually went up, um, but trust assets, the MERS trust assets went up, uh, 1.59 million. The, and you also did very well in the MERS trust, net investment income of just under $2 million, which is very significant. So that shows a net pension liability of 8.9 million. Now, what is significant, so that's about 65.8% funded, is what that comes out to. Now, um, the, the important thing that I wanted to, to bring up, to highlight to you, is that because you did issue that pension bond, that $8 million that you sent right into a new pension trust, uh, is not reflected in these actuary numbers. So, we're, we're saying we're 65.8% funded, but that doesn't take into account any of the pension bond money. The, that's in a separate trust, um, that will work its way in together with future actuarial, um, studies. But this one, so the MERS actuarial is, is of December 31st, 2020, so that 8 million never made bid in. It's an, um, there's over $10 million now in that new pension trust at Morgan Stanley. So if you take the $10 million into account, you are $1,060,000 to the good, meaning you are overfunded, actually. So you're 104% funded, as opposed to the 65% funded, just MERS alone. So that really, I mean, the, the pension bond is the game changer. At a very low interest rate, you're able to become just, just about fully funded. And I, you know, I think you'd be very happy with that. That, I believe, would be the intent of those pension bonds, and, uh, that is definitely showing, uh, that it's, it's proving to be, uh, very valuable. So with that, if there's any questions or anything I can answer, any questions council may have?
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Peterson.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm just.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I just wanted to, um, in the packet on page 13, Anthony's memo, uh, again, I just wanted to call attention to the, uh, something that, uh, needed to be trumpeted, and I've, I've mentioned it before, the, uh, how the DDA took, uh, over half a million dollars into the parking fund, uh, during the, this, the COVID, the pandemic, to make sure it stayed, uh, solvent, uh, with the decreased revenues because of, uh, COVID. So I just wanted to, again, thank the DDA for, uh, contributing that to the parking fund.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Rena, thank you for your, uh, detailed analysis and your comments. Um, it's always good to hear from a independent auditor, um, the state of affairs of the city. You know, on the topic of Headley and Proposal A, um, I just always think it's a good time to educate, um, residents about how that works. You know, as an example, in layman's terms, if their property value was up 10%, how come the city was only getting a slightly over 5% increase in, in taxable revenues?
So that, and that is why I try and highlight, when I say that the property tax revenues are up, I, residents usually start thinking, well, they must have raised my rates, which is not, not the case here. Um, so the city is capped as far as what you can, um, what you, even if, the, the city's capped up to 5%, you can't raise people's values on their, on their residences or businesses more than that, or the rate of inflation. So even if someone's property, their value was up 10 or 20% even, in this crazy market, um, the city is capped at what they can raise their taxable value for their property taxes. Yeah, so, um, they would never see that kind of significant jump in their property taxes based on, uh, the.
Whoops.
You're froze.
You're back.
We missed, we missed some of your words there.
Oh.
You were frozen.
Oh, sorry, the, um, did you hear the, the part about the, um, so if someone's, uh, property tax, property value raised 10 or 20%
Right.
in a year, um, the city could not raise their taxes by that.
Correct. Further comments? I'd just like to say, I think the city's in excellent financial shape, and again, it's nice to have someone from the outside tell us that, so, thank you very much for that report. Merry Christmas.
My pleasure.
Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you, everyone.
Do we need a motion to accept the report, or is it just a report?
Blaine?
Either way, he's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, the audit report as presented, uh, to City Council tonight.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson, is there discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes, is consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of December 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Next, next is approval of the consent agenda. First is the 2022 NOHAD inter-local agreement with Oakland County, and second is the schedule of the 2022 City Council regular meetings.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, there. Councilmember Albrecht.
I just noticed, uh, you know, each year, we always look at that schedule and going, oh, is it gonna interrupt with, interfere with line up? Well, this year, it doesn't.
Right.
Whether we, the line up is the, is the week before, so we'll have our normal Monday meeting for the first time in a few years, so.
Good.
That's the first thing I check every year.
A quirk in the schedule, right? Okay, next, we have no old business or table items, no public hearings, no legislative deliberations, but we do have a legislative deliberation, consideration ordinance amendment to section 2125, fence standards, second reading and adoption. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Sage.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Harrison, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of ordinance amendment to section 2306, light and illumination, second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, can that just be noted, um, in the future, that it's light and illumination for commercial and multifamily? So no one thinks it's, was residential, moving forward?
Yep, absolutely. Councilmember Sage? Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, I, I wouldn't have any objection to a, a comment on that, I would just note that the light and illumination, that's the actual title of the section number, so maybe just a, a comment for, that the clerk can put into the minutes to say, dealing with the commercial.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as, as we've discussed this ordinance, and it's come to its final reading and adoption, um, I've made mention that I'd like to see a residential, uh, version of this ordinance. So I, I'm asking for clarification from the City Manager, whether that would require a motion on my part for the consideration to draft an ordinance that would speak specifically to residential versus residential, or whether it's just a friendly suggestion, and that we hope it's on an agenda item here in the very near future.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can take that?
Mr. City Attorney?
So the, I believe, the minutes, um, included a direction, um, from last time, so I would, I would suggest that, uh, that was sufficient for me in administration. In fact, I've started working on, um, some language that, uh, as one of the, the next few, uh, meetings I would put before you. Part of the issue is, is that, um, without actually having given direction other than to do one, um, just trying to figure out where City Council's head would be at as to what you would want to regulate or how you'd want to regulate it, so I'm, I'm going into this, um, I guess, this stage of it to put some possible, um, re- uh, residential restrictions or tightening it up or additional language, uh, with the idea that nor- normally, since this is a zoning, that it would originate at Planning Commission, but Planning Commission, uh, when they were considering this ordinance, uh, really didn't have, uh, an appetite at that time to, uh, address residential to residential lighting. So I, I would suggest that the language that we've come up with would come here first to make sure that City Council is, that's what City Council wants, and then, without taking action on that ordinance, that the next action would be to send it to Planning Commission, saying, we like this one, we like these, vet it, and do the, what's required under the zoning code, which is to have public hearings down there with the eventual, uh, to come back up here. So that, that's my long-term, uh, and I shouldn't, it's not that long, but my, my, my plan to bring it to City Council first, instead of going to Planning Commission.
Perfect, thank you. That sounds like a plan, Mr. City Manager, or City Attorney. Good with that, Mr. Sage?
I'm good.
Yes. Uh, next to reports on regular business is a pay in lieu report and discussion. Uh, the parking committee met, uh, Mr. Councilmember Sage, did you want to? That, or do you want?
Uh, sure, um, I didn't know if Nick had any comments as well, or any background?
Nick, do you want to, or Mr. City Manager, did you?
I was gonna say, Nick actually drafted a, uh, executive summary from that meeting, and also has his memo behind it, and he's ready to speak.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bandar, welcome.
Thank you, welcome, uh, welcome to you all, too. Yeah, the reports, the report, it's in your packets, uh, the executive summary, I guess, would be, the committee met, we had quite a robust discussion about the, the things that we've done during the pandemic to try to assist our businesses in order to keep the downtown, um, vibrant. We, the DDA, as you know, paid into the parking fund, we just talked about that. Uh, we did outdoor dining and platforms, and we've done everything we can to try to, to keep us at a high occupancy rate, which we've been successful at. And over the years, City Council's adjusted this number, our pay in lieu number is, in essence, when a business changes to a use that is more intense of, uh, parking requirements by the zoning ordinance, they have an option to go to the Planning Commission and ask to, instead of, because they can't put parking on their own site, to pay in lieu of providing parking onsite. That number over the years has been $12,000, which we ascertained was the cost of a space to build in a deck at the time, uh, we talked about now, the cost to build in a deck is between 24 and $30,000, but a couple of years ago, we dropped that number to $7,500, hopefully to incent some turnover of businesses to get, um, usually it's restaurants, bars, um, things that need more parking, that also generate a higher turnover of people that go to the meters, if you will. So, um, it's come up in the PSD, the Planning Commission, City Council, uh, the DDA, again, we haven't had many takers at the $7,500 per space, and should we look at that number again as, as allowed in the zoning ordinance? So the, the PAC came up with a recommendation that we thought, um, it doesn't have to be a forever adjustment, but at this time, we would like, the recommendation from the PAC was to drop that number to $1,000 per space. If the total spaces were 10 or less, so $10,000 or less, then they would have to, uh, make that payment upfront when they got approved for the use, or if it was over $10,000, it can be spent out over a period up to 10 years, again, coming to City Council, asking for a, um, an agreement to be made with the City Attorney. So it's pretty straightforward, there's no magic to the number. We did talk about the fact that we have ongoing costs for striping, ceiling, fixing the parking lots, even though we have maintenance built into the parking fund, um, any extra dollars helped defer that, the wear and tear of the street, because we still have to stripe the streets and the off lots and the meters and all that good stuff, so we felt like, instead of making it zero, which would be a pure incentive, we talked about that, back in the day, Main Street was parking exempt, anybody on Main Street, from bridge to bridge, didn't have to worry about a required parking situation, only off side streets. But this is talking about the parking management district, so the entire district, which is basically Walnut to Water, um, and Bridge to Bridge, would now be able to anticipate paying in lieu of recommendations for $1,000 per space. Again, we could revisit that, if it worked and we got very successful in it, parking became a problem again, maybe we change that number in the future, but the committee felt that that was a fair number to land on. We'll have to answer any questions right now.
Yeah, and I, I would just comment that, you know, you know, the, the committee, we had a very robust discussion, we went back and forth, and the committee was unanimous that that seemed like a number that we could all live with, because some people hired, some people wanted it zero, we felt like that was a pretty good start, and as we said, we can move it if we need to. Councilmember Peterson.
Can we make a motion, then, to approve that tonight?
Yeah, I was just, is there?
Okay. Well, I have a discussion regarding that, too, because I would like to make a motion to accept the $1,000 per spot. It's not what I feel should be, I do feel it should be zero, but I do feel that the work of the PAC made this very, a very, uh, palatable for me to accept, to where we do not stifle economic growth downtown anymore, and, um, appreciate all that time that went into this discussion, so.
So we'll have a motion by Councilmember Peterson?
I'll support that.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia, discussion.
No, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, so, no, it was, I, I sincerely appreciate everyone's hard work on this, and I think it will actually move the city forward where it needs to, to get some of these other places that wanted to move and bring new business into those other places, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
This was a topic I didn't really know a lot about, so I read a lot of, of the, the package that was put together, and I don't know, Nick, if you did this, but on page 165, uh, of our packet, when you use the Greens Art Supply as an example, I just thought, you know, when you, when you think of an ordinance of unatt- or a, a, what, a, of unintended consequences of something that was passed, when you looked at the 7,500 that is currently in existence, and what would it cost for a restaurant serving alcohol to go in there, the costs were prohibitive, even with the 10-year payback, um, you know, looking at, I think, uh, one of the numbers was, uh, uh, 876,000, or, excuse me, $547,000 to, to be paid, so. I concur with, uh, Councilperson Peterson, I wish this was zero, but I commend the work of the PAC to go from the 12 to the 7,500 to the 1,000, which will, um, which will. which will, I hope, help economic development. And I was also curious, when I read this, was that in the time that we've had at 7,500, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, only four businesses have taken advantage of it, and one of those businesses never really came to fruition. So we've only had three businesses use it. So it's not working. So thank you, PAC, for addressing what could help us spur some further economic growth in our downtown.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Yeah, really good comments by council on this, and I agree. I view this as like an economic stimulus. This is a stimulus to our businesses. It's not a big revenue loss, to your point, Councilmember Albrecht. So I think this should be good. We are looking at some turnover in downtown, so hopefully this brings the right businesses to our great downtown. Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're correct, Mayor Protem Salvia. So the intent of the parking district and the fund itself is sustainability, right? Self-funded. And taking some of these actions will actually drive intensity of use to some of these locations where they might change their business model. And that's going to increase, then, use on the system. Will generate more revenue. It's no longer a disincentive. It actually provides a path for development. So I was happy with the decision as well.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So my question, though, is how has this been relayed to those who have already paid significant dollar amounts? Was that part of the discussion?
I don't think it was. I think it was just, we have to move forward with this, and there's, I don't think there's going to be any clawbacks or anything like that.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, so nothing, nothing came up?
Past years, it was very expensive for many who actually paid into that, so.
Right.
Okay.
Further comments?
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to make a comment. I've been around long enough where I actually supported, you know, the reasons why, back in the day, to have it, 12,000. That was before the parking garages. And, you know, it seemed unfair that some people had to pay for parking, other people didn't. But now that we have the parking structures, and really, times have changed. And I think, I think that's one thing I like to think, the city council is very, you know, we're pretty good at being adaptive. So I think this is the right thing to do. And, you know, another important thing for me was Nick, who's the economic, I don't want to put words in Nick's mouth, but who's the economic development person, felt like 1,000 was okay, was not going to turn off any business. So I think this is a good move, and is a stimulus for downtown, which is what we want, because we never know how things are going to go in the next six months even.
So without further ado, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for that.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the annual fire report. Mr. Fire Chief is here today, Mr. Seeslag. Chief Seeslag.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. In your packet, you received the 2020 report as a reminder. That was almost a year old. You'll see a new copy of that being published sometime around the end of January, the first part of February. There was some specific information that was requested, and I'll just try to kind of do an executive summary of that, as opposed to spending a lot of time in the details, and obviously answer any questions as they come up. Towards the back of the package, after the annual report, you'll see a call volume dashboard, total responses for the year, and this is as of October 31st or November 1st. There's two months of call volume that are not here. Currently, we're averaging about 140 calls a month at this time. So we'll someplace around 280 to 300 calls that will be added on to this at the end of the year. Medical emergencies continue to be the number one action within the city, and even with the reduced call line, we see medical emergencies continue to lead the pace. Unfortunately, this year, the severity of the medical emergencies has increased. The total number of cardiac arrests, overdoses, and unfortunately, attempted suicides, all kind of brought out because of COVID, of people not wanting to go to the hospital or waiting too long, has added some seriousness to those types of calls. Probably the biggest piece that we see is non-emergency medical transports that have dropped because of the arrangements that have been made at Ascension, and not reflecting any changes that have been made in respect with Beaumont. Other responses remain somewhat consistent. I'm happy to report, from years ago, the actions that council took for false alarms has now helped to turn the tide a little bit on false alarms, and the total amount of structure fires within the city fairly consistent within the last two to three years. And again, compliments to the fire department. They headed to a very good save on Springview the other day with a fire in a furnace room. The next page, you'll see an organizational chart broken into administrative and operations. It represents the shifts that are broken in. A, B, and C are typically the full-time, and the E shift is our part-time volunteers, are paid on call, along with then the other sections between emergency management and the other items that the fire department takes care of in regards to the emergency plan for the city. You'll see a master list of the folks who are on the fire department, which includes full-time and part-time, along with their OR certifications, and an indication as to whether they're full-time or part-time. One of the items that we've been working on is the, what we call the fleet replacement plan. You'll see a listing of the fire equipment that's at the fire station, the age of the equipment, the estimated value, if it's sold or when it's sold, the estimated value of replacement, and along with a schedule as to when it would fall to be replaced. Now, even though we have a projection of a date of replacement, we still do an annual evaluation of the equipment, and whenever we can, example, Alpha II and the last Bravo unit, were both delayed by several years because we thought we could get additional service out of them. So we still look at the ability to push those replacement dates back to go ahead and spend our money properly. And we also are looking at, in the near future, so doing some evaluation of the call volume and the needs of the city. And we may be coming at a future date to council to take a look at potentially reducing one or two of the emergency vehicles we have, just because we can manage. I've listed, as opposed to printing all of the SOGs off, you have a copy of the index for the SOGs. There's about 380 pages, and I did think that would be a great use of papers. But if there's any particular SOG that council's interested in, I'd be happy to go ahead and supply a copy of that for you. And then, if you take a look at the roster of all the people on staff, I printed up individual training records for each one, showing you their training and certificates. You'll see some are two pages, some are only three or four. On one page, typically, the longer a firefighter is with us, the more training and certifications that they're receiving. So that kind of gives you an indication as to where we're at from a training standpoint. I do have one other piece of information that I think is important, that I'll get to you probably the first meeting in January, if that's okay with you, and that would be our rental and rental property registration. We're in that right now. People are filling in and sending us their rental registrations. I will tell you that it appears that we're up another 10% as a quick snapshot of rental properties. Those are properties that are being converted from privately owned to being rentals. And I'll also tell you that currently, the numbers are indicating about 50% of our BLIT cases are being handled as rental properties. So about 50% of our BLIT cases end up becoming our rentals. But I'll get those, a better report for you with more information and data sometime the first meeting or second meeting of January, if that would be acceptable. Mr. Mayor, I will submit the report respectfully to you and council, and we'll answer any questions or provide additional information as council sees fit.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to thank you for the comprehensive report, and I particularly liked, and I know it was not easy, the qualification cards for all the staff memorializing that for not only our review, but just so that our citizens and residents can look and see how well-qualified each of our firefighters are, and the work they have to do behind the scenes to get qualified in all these different fire officer, one, two, three, you know, all the different qualifications they have to have. And as you said, some of them were two pages long. So it's good to know that, one, our fire department is so well-trained, so well-certified, and that we've memorialized it here in this report. Thank you for adding that, along with the list of all the staff. So I appreciate your work, Chief, and everything that you and your team does.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, Chief, I want to echo those comments. After reviewing that full entire report, I am very impressed with our fire department. I have always known that they've been a great one, but to see it laid out the way you did this way, I appreciate them. I appreciate the volunteers for the CERT. I think they've played a huge, they've had a huge impact in our community as well. So, you know, I wish them well for the rest, you know, the rest of the time, and appreciate you putting all this together for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments for the chief? Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for the report, and great to hear the status of the training and the certification levels for the force. One comment that I would have is I would like a forward look on the training and development and certification in terms of, you know, what are the next steps? You know, what officers are looking to be certified as a paramedic? You know, what are, what are those development plans? So in other words, you know, this is a great snapshot of where we're at, but where do we want to develop the workforce to? So, you know, in future reports, maybe we can look to develop that. I also look forward to hearing about the rental properties. I think it will be helpful for council to have some visibility in the quantity of rentals within the city. It is, I think, a topic, I'll say, probably nationwide in terms of short-term rentals, and what type of nuisance, or what type of actions may need to be taken or not taken around that, because it does change the community environment when you have temporary rentals. I mean, and I'm, you know, I'm one that uses Airbnbs when we travel, but that does affect our community. And so I think through our rental audit program, that's really our only visibility into that. You know, it's not like you can go on and just look at a map and see where they're at. So I think some information along those lines would be helpful. Other than that, thank you for the report.
Thank you, councilperson.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So in regards to the short-term rental, though, are you referring to the actual rentals of the current, just regular rental properties, or are you speaking of the short-term rentals, Chief?
Right now, it's the normal rental properties.
Okay.
We have had, I know of one rental property that's been used as Airbnb, and we've required them to at least register as a rental. I think maybe the city attorney can speak a little bit more about the proposals that might be in the legislature. But to my knowledge, we only have one Airbnb that's registered as a rental. And so the other rental properties we have are typically single-family and do not have normally a high turnover of rentals.
Okay. I didn't think so. So thanks for clarifying that. Thank you.
Further comments?
Thank you, Chief. I just, I just want to say, I think that training really shows that we have a professional fire department, and that's what we want, and that's what our residents demand. So thank you, Chief, for putting that out. And also, just again, I had a thanks to, for the COVID program. I think that was just run very professionally, very well, and was really, you know, a great thing for our community to help fight COVID, which is, we're still continuing to battle with that. So thank you, Chief, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one general comment for all of our residents, as we get into the Christmas season, please remember to be fire-safe at home. Keep your Christmas trees well-watered, and cooking fires continue to be the number one cause of structure fires in the United States. And unfortunately, holidays seems to be one of the more active. So if you are cooking at home, please try to stay in the kitchen with the items you're doing, or be safe and enjoy your holidays and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Next is a request to purchase a 2021 Harley-Davidson police motorcycle from Wolverine Harley-Davidson at a price of $17,100. Councilmember Albrecht?
Just a question for Chief Shetlandhelm or City Manager Wing. On page 226 of the package, it says quotes were obtained to purchase 2012 Harley-Davidson police motorcycle. That should be 2021, correct?
Yes.
That's, because I know we're selling, we're going to auction off the old one. So the cost is going to be $17,100 less whatever we get from the sale of the current motorcycle. I just want to make sure.
Correct. That's correct.
I was reading.
Yeah, there's a typo there, where quotes were obtained to purchase the, instead of 12, it should have been flipped around 21. So yes, you did note a typographical error.
No, and my point, the $17,100 is what we'll pay, but at auction, we should get some back, because I know when you presented this to the Budget Committee, we take very good care of our motorcycles, and they, I guess they said Harley-Davidson's retain value well, so we'll get some money back from that also to offset the $17,100.
Yeah, we hope probably between 10 and 12, if we can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to support the purchase of this vehicle. I know that we've discussed it at length in our budgeting committee. It was supposed to come before us later, in the following year, but we have an opportunity right now to make this purchase, and I think we need to do that, and it is in our budget to do so.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison, support by Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess this is a question for the chief or for the city manager. So given the efficiency of these vehicles, and obviously, the flexibility that they provide, is there room to increase our fleet of motorcycles within the force?
I'll let the chief actually talk to that. Chief Shetlandhelm?
Yes, I think two right now is ample, based on the number of riders we have. Obviously, we have to have, you know, patrol vehicle is, the standard patrol vehicle is a little bit more versatile, as far as person transport and things of that nature. So I think two is ample and sufficient, and we certainly appreciate council's support of the motorcycle.
Plus, it's probably a little tough to ride them tonight, maybe. I don't know.
Correct. There is a limited season. These guys do push it as far as they can, for sure.
I have seen the big tires, like, on the trail, though.
Right.
Spikes.
Not cool.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the report from the Rochester Community Legacy Committee Report. Mr. City Manager?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. In tonight's packet, starting on page 229, and then, or I guess 228 is my cover memo. I am the representative for the city on this committee, and the current agenda from our meeting from this past week is there. The few items that I'd like to highlight is, the committee is working on a draft request for proposal. So really, that would go out to the public, and it's an anticipated first to go to Oakland County for review. The school district is using their, I guess, expertise, if you will, to assist in this. And then it would be planned for public release all at the same time in early January of 2022. The hope, then, would be to digest all of the responses. There might be some tours and some other things that would occur, but they would have a window of time that everybody would have the same opportunity for them to do their due diligence. Next on their agenda was the initial review of materials that were identified. So they have started to list out or create an inventory of everything from murals to artifacts to plaques, sculptures. They started off indoors, and artifacts to plaques, sculptures. They started off indoors, and that, there's a subcommittee that will be working, continuing to work on that, and then go on to the outdoors when it's a bit warmer. Only other thing really to note is their next anticipated meeting is sometime in February or March of 2022.
Thank you.
I just had a idea for council that I'd like to run across as, and Mr. City Attorney. You know, is there a, a non-binding resolution that we can have or something that we, we can state that we, you know, expect the historical aspect to be considered with the sale, just to let the business community know? I mean, I don't know how exactly that works, but, you know, maybe that's something that we can consider as opposed to the sale's done and then they're coming to tear it down or something without that knowledge. Maybe that would help the process. So that's just an idea.
It's a good one, Mayor.
To put out there. Again, non-binding, obviously, we're not trying to tell them what to do, even though we kind of were telling, trying to tell them what to do. But Councilmember Albrecht?
I, I know we, we talked as a council several meetings ago about the, the mural. And I, I think for us, as, as this is in our city, for us to state our intent, I see a lot of head nods here. I think that'd be a, a great idea. And there's more than just the mural there. There's the, there's these buildings. And, and I know we have a lot of passionate people on the Legacy Committee who are, have, I've met with a few of them talking about historical preservation. So I would, I would welcome that, Mayor, however.
So, so maybe Mr. City Attorney and the, and the administration can come with some, and, and again, we're not trying to say, you got to save that wall or something, just a general statement so any developer at least has this, and then somehow we can go to a school board meeting or something and just communicate that to people. And again, not trying to tell them what to do, but people know that this is coming. They expect us to be involved, even though it's not our building, they expect us to, as, as if it's our building. So I just think we need, if we're a little proactive, that might help the situation.
Mayor, on, on that note, though, has anyone checked to see, because this happened with McGregor, has anyone checked to see if the land that was given to the school district on this building is allowed to be sold?
I, I think Blaine checked on that, and I think the answer is yes, it is allowed to be sold.
Okay.
Where McGregor, they didn't check.
Correct.
This time, they did check.
Right.
They've done their due diligence. I'll say the initial, I wouldn't even call it a draft of the RFP, does have language that really I would say the overall majority of the committee is focused on preservation, historical preservation. And so some document happy to work with the attorney if, you know, supportive history or, or, you know, that that's reflected. I'm not sure how the final evaluation, but it seemed like from the committee's standpoint that they were hoping that even in the evaluations, that additional credit would be noted for developer proposals that do promote history. So, you know.
And ultimately, it's going to come to the Planning Commission and probably this council, right? Because I'm assuming it's going to be a special project of some kind, right? So, so just, you know, just threw that out there. So we'll have a presentation and let's get in front of that as much as we can. Councilmember Albrecht?
City Manager Wing, I know you know some of the people on the Legacy Committee, some of them are Rochester residents who are, are well-versed in the historical preservation and the historical history of that building. So perhaps they may, you may have one or two of them work with you and City Attorney Croft to, to draft that for our review.
Definitely. There's, I would say almost the majority of the committee is actually has a historical bent. Some of them have actual qualifications. Other ones are part of different historical groups. The administration over there has also hired experts and is working with Oakland County's individuals that are part of their historical component as well. So it's definitely very well documented.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So has, no one's come up with a price to sell that yet, though, correct? Okay.
Not, not, not that we know of.
Okay.
And there, there are, there are rumors. People call me with rumors that are like, wow, who thought of that?
Okay, I'm just curious.
The reason why they're issuing the RFP is actually so there is a set window of time, so nobody has any extra knowledge. Everybody has the same amount of information. They can all do their due diligence. They would have the same contact for the school if they would like to actually go in and do a tour, look at the facilities, look at, you know, unfortunately, there's some leaky roofs and some HVAC systems and some known, you know, repairs that would need to be made, especially if it was to be reused in certain capacity similar to a school. So anybody would have to do it at their own, but there's not a, you know, a known offer or anything like that. They're doing that on purpose so that it is all at the same time, and that window is all at the same time.
So that, excuse me, so that will all be, that's all going to be in the request for proposal?
That's my understa-
Right, you think?
Yeah, that's my understanding, is they plan on providing all of that information, making it public through various websites, their website, issuing it out all at the same time so that everybody would have, you know, the, the exact same time and the same window to be able to review it and then to respond.
Okay.
And just my last comment is, but it is theirs to sell. And they are going to sell it. So, I mean, it's not like that's going to be there like it is right now forever. I mean, it's going to be sold and someone's going to develop it. Just, we're going to try to do the best we can to protect the historical aspects.
We could always sell, we could always buy it, sell this, build condos here.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. Million-dollar condos, brownstones.
I'm not leaving the park.
Next, we have the budget amendment for the workers' compensation insurance through the Michigan Municipal League. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, continuing on from one topic to the next. For our workers' comp insurance, instead of waiting for our quarterly budget amendments, I worked with our finance department and HR staff. Again, in the, in our packet, starting on page 230, I detail out how we received through, we're currently with a vendor, which is the municipal, the Michigan Municipal League, the MML, for our workers' compensation insurance. They go through a process to reconcile, to basically run through various components. I did include information, how that calculation and factors and formula, how that actually works. A few things counted against us. The main ones were really COVID. You know, in response to COVID, one of their calculation factors is actually our, our wages. And so, as council knows, we've authorized hazard pay, and then there was also several individuals that did get bonuses, hazard bonuses as well. And both of those factors did increase our payroll. In addition, the state mandated that we had to report certain claims that were COVID. So if a worker happened to have COVID and actually come in and expose one of our other employees, or maybe a group of employees, and that person or those other individuals did get COVID during a timeframe, the state actually required us to process that as a workers' comp claim. So the city did follow the state law, and we, we had a number of individuals, unfortunately, that, that that occurred. That almost cost about $10,000. So when you're looking at that 72, direct, directly related to that reporting component is just about $10,000. In addition, it's, unfortunately, we've had some additional accidents and injuries. Those would count against us, you know, regardless. So some of those are, you know, just like a car accident, you know, if a vehicle backing into something, that counts as a claim. So if you had your own car and you had 10 claims, yes, your insurance is going to go up. So same thing for the city with this. So, you know, we've had some individuals that, you know, have politely say wrestled with our police officers, and we've had some, you know, some additional bang-ups and bruises and some of that, you know, so those injuries, you know, were, occurred during this time. And that, that multiplier factor did increase. I also listed some next steps for us to, to hopefully offset some of this cost. We're still, city's still seeking in regards to the COVID expenses, looking from federal, state, and county governments to assist us in actually addressing, since some of these were actual mandates from the state, you know, in regards to reporting. And then also with the hazard pay and a few of the other things to see if some of the, the state and federal and county dollars are available to help us offset that. So we'll continue to look at that, and if we were able to receive that, those would be reduced. The city staff is also, a few years ago, we created a safety committee, but we've, through that committee, we've actually looked at is now we have monthly meetings, a formal safety manual is actually in progress. Our committee is also working on additional training. I know they've just done a walkthrough to kind of see what things are the common accidents and injuries, additional checklists, actual reviews of our vehicle and equipment. Might already see our police officers and firefighters, where they turn on the lights and kind of go through a checklist. Similar, we'll be doing that at our Public Works, with our Public Works vehicles, and even with our vehicles that are used by our inspectors and whatnot. And finally, this upcoming year in 2022, the city will be seeking additional proposals for work compensation insurance, as well as working with brokers, and possibly creating one that's geared more towards smaller municipalities. I've worked with MML and tried to work within the organization. I felt that the, being penalized for the COVID components, both the hazard pay and also the state mandated reporting, quite honestly, was unfair. That it was easy for them to calculate this is what those increase were. However, they have their formula, and that's, that's their factoring that they've stuck with. So at this point, through finance, HR, and myself, the, the lowest we could get the price down to was $72,621. So tonight, we're asking for that as a quarterly budget amendment.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Manager Wing, on the front page, you said Rochester currently has a 1.42 experience modifier factor. When do we get the new one based on this experience? And do you know what that is? And I'm, I'm assuming it's going to go up.
Yeah, actually, we've been better from this window of time. So I'm going to guess we'll probably be about 1.3 with this upcoming one. But at that same time, I'm also going to be looking at alternatives. Some of the other formulas actually go by, no, you get, you get it rated by the profession. So police and fire are always higher just due to their, the risk assessment. But instead of actually doing it by the actual wages, it's actually by the number of people in those high-risk fields. So there's other formulas that are done, and if we went to another entity, we wouldn't necessarily, we'd kind of, you don't lose because they're going to be looking at our past history for accidents and injuries, but I, I do believe we won't be weighted by our COVID components. And in addition, they'll be able to, you know, again, have a different formula that potentially look at it. Our claims are still going to be a claims if a police officer, you know, got, got into a tussle with, with somebody that, that we, you know, had an injury, if it was a shoulder injury, that sort of stuff, that, that's, you know, still going to show up.
So, so next year, we won't have the hazard bonuses? We won't have this state mandated reporting? You're saying the 1.42 will go down, plus you're going to look at other providers of this. So would we see another amount that you'll present to us at this time next year, but not as crazy as this one?
Yeah, so it will actually, the timing actually is normally, I want to say probably April or May is for the renewal period. So it'll be closer for the renewal. This is when they did their reconciliation, and so basically from the end of October until now, we've been really working with them, trying to get, the number was $83,000 and change. So we were able to get it dropped down to the 72,621, you know, using that time and going through various, you know, specific each position and who was what, and what calculation and which risk factor that they should be at. But yes, I, I do hope next year in 2022 to come, you know, with the request for proposal responses, talk about the, the pluses and the minuses from the MML, which is, you know, right now probably has over 900 municipalities in the state, as well as there's another cooperative component, as well as working with a broker, what their import is, as well as looking at potentially a new sort of entity that's more focused on smaller municipalities. So, you know, we've been working on this as our number unfortunately has, have been increasing. And again, it did not appear that the MML was going to take into account the state mandates and this COVID and, and have it, you know, set off to the side, knowing that, you know, that that was really a, more of a one-time factor, maybe two or three years that it's there, but not in ongoing costs that we would normally have.
That being said, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $72,621 to cover this increase in the workers' comp claims.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So, you know, it's never pleasant to get bad news in, in terms of budget amounts, and this is a pretty sizable for our city budget. However, I do think that the actions taken, as well as the next steps, you know, the actions to mitigate it, as well as the next steps are appropriate. But again, it's, it's unfortunate this comes, comes to us after the fact.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, so, but looking at these two items, which, you know, shame, who, who's the one who made COVID the one that we had to, it had to be accounted for?
It was an executive order, so the governor.
Right. So, which is interesting, because there are also other, the county government and all of them, they've all, so is everyone going to see these increases? Every municipality going to see this huge increase? And is, was this just a money generator? I mean, that's what it feels like to me on that. As far as the, and I see that, I'm actually thinking, I mean, do we have a dollar amount for like the portion that was for accidents and injuries?
Actually, we're, we're working with our representative to have all three of these areas broken out so that we'll see if the COVID mandate portion is, you know, what part of that factoring formula is, the COVID actual, our increase for our wages, and then break out what is our accidents and injuries.
Okay. I just, it is very disappointing, like stated, that we are being hit with this for a long term, because this is a continual rate increase that we have to continually pay every month, even though we have to pay this difference now. And I think that in lieu of cities going through so much with this here, for them to then put places on, it's, it's very, it's a burden that, why give the money and, and, and do all this here and then turn around and penalize people for utilizing it? So I will support this because we have to pay it, but I don't want to. And I, I do think it's wrong. And I wish that they would have worked sooner with this here, because knowing that this was back in April, okay, like, and now it's December and they want paid, that's bad business on their part. So.
And I will, we'll note again that, you know, from the end of October through now, they've been working with us to reduce the costs. And again, I'll, I'll note that Anthony and Marcy and myself will continue to work with the, you know, our county, our state, and the federal to get whatever dollars we can to reduce that, that $72,000 to as low as we can.
I know, and that just doesn't even make sense, that we have to keep going back to get money to reduce this cost, which was being penal, we're being penalized for, for something that was totally out of city control after they allowed it. Okay.
Unfunded mandates.
It's not in the holiday spirit. How's that?
No.
Councilmember Harrison?
I, I just want to echo my fellow councilmembers' frustrations with this. It's, it's never fun to get a surprise bill like this at the very end of the year. So I think it's very important that we go out for requests for proposal, and I'm hopeful that we'll see other options for us away from the MML in the early spring, if that, when we can expect those.
Yeah, so we'll be putting together probably in March. I believe the renewal period is May 1st, so we have to go out, actually calculate them, and then I'll come back with, you know, a recommendation.
Thank you.
One other comment. You know, they're just a lab, supposed to be a labious to help us, okay, not hurt us. So, this is my final comment on that.
Maybe that's their strange way of carrying her.
Maybe they needed a bonus.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the opioid litigation settlement update. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, working with our city attorney and also our police department. Yep working with our city attorney and also our police department I don't remember who actually flagged this to my attention but in talking with both the chief and with attorney Crot I did not foresee us as a small municipality actually going after the various claimants and so being a part of a settlement through the attorney general's office you know this does seem the most prudent way for us to to participate and I've been working with attorney Crot I don't know if you want to want to say the next step is this application we've at least flagged and put our placeholder literally almost every day I'm now getting a eighth deadlines by January 2nd you need to fill out this paperwork however the documentation does require me to bring it before council so I tonight that's why it's in your packet long as you guys feel that this is the the way that you would like us to go we would I tomorrow morning I would log in and complete the the paperwork I don't know attorney Crowder or if the chief would like to.
Mr. City Attorney.
You know I think that's that's fair the only downside is you give up your rights to sue the firm or sue a company and distributors individually which I don't think this city would do so the the action item it truly would be to authorize the city manager to submit the settlement participation form that that indicates to the world that that city of Rochester is is putting themselves as a claimant at some point there's a determination by the defendants because they you know this is a class action so they're trying to buy themselves out of future litigation so they have to have a critical number of participating jurisdictions so Rochester adding to that number is is helpful towards that end and I heard in fact an advertisement or a message on the radio on the way in on this this morning so this was this is I don't think there's really anything any reason not to not to do this I can't tell you what anticipated numbers are going to be it's going to depend on on how many people are participating how many communities are participating Michigan has an interest in you know the attorney general's office has an interest in getting as many Michigan communities to keep as much money into Michigan and there's the the these monies will be restricted I've gone through a number of what those restrictions are because you have to go use them for opioid related issues whether it's treatment or there's there's very broad very so you're talking to the police department there shouldn't be any issue spending the money in in the city of Rochester so I am in support of moving forward with authorizing city manager to sign the opt-in paperwork.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you I appreciate your work on this getting involved this is an important issue facing not just our community but so many across the country if the chiefs are still on the the call I'm wondering if we have an estimate of how many of our Rochester residents have been affected by the opioid epidemic or if we have like any estimate of cases that you've been involved in?
You could pull those numbers are fairly easy to go ahead but I would probably estimate someplace around 50 to 75.
I'm sorry will you say that again?
I can it's easy to get those numbers I can get those tomorrow but my guess would be someplace in the neighborhood of 50 to 75 those are typically some of our most serious calls that we have with overdoses and unfortunately we see many residents more than once a year.
Thank you.
I think unfortunately.
I would concur with the chief it's it's unfortunately a pretty common situation here in the city and certainly throughout the area so if you're looking for specific numbers we can get that for you but certainly anything that we can do to help this situation through education and other monetary assistance would be helpful.
Is there a motion mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you yeah so I was thinking it's pretty appropriate that this comes before us when chief earlier mentioned that was one of the reasons why they've had increased medical runs was due to you know suicides and drug overdose so clearly I would have not thought of the our Rochester applying to be part of this but I'm thankful to administration for bringing this forward and so I make a motion to authorize administration to register the city to opt in as a political subdivision for this class action opioid settlement.
Support.
Motion by the mayor Protem support by councilmember Peterson madam clerk the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albert.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes. Thank you today we see a report from the various boards and commission the one commission that met was the PAC councilmember Sage you want to?
Thank you Mr. Mayor well obviously the majority of the discussion was parking in lieu which we have already discussed here as well tonight the only other item on there and maybe Blaine wants to to mention more of it just a general open discussion so far with the city and and Dr. Atala regarding his lots here that join this greater area here around the council and and council chambers and city hall.
The ones over there and we we just authorized the city manager to have a discussion see what the property owner wanted to talk about there's really is that?
Yeah they're happy to to fill in a little bit more so Dr. Atala you know placed a phone call to me and asked if there would be any interest in a public private some sort of cooperation and he didn't provide me with any you know program or plan or anything further I said you know I would be happy to bring that and I think the the specific committee before would need to go to council is the parking advisory committee and I explained that you know I would I would do that and you know he wanted to highlight that during times when the parking lot next to our park is full that you know people do tend to park in his parking lot and he also noted how he just recently flood sealed it and then striped his his lot and again how you know there's there's overall you know some use and instead of putting up you know barricades or putting up you know a fence and having a gate and that sort of stuff he wanted to see if there would be something that we would be able to work out so I brought it and the pack you know said go ahead have a conversation so I've not yet had the conversation but I will be reaching out to Doc Atala to to set up a time to you know to see what what he was thinking or what he is thinking and then we'll bring that back to the parking advisory committee and if there's any action they'll make a recommendation and then I would bring it back to to council.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes thank you mayor so is there any projected finish date for the new housing that he's putting into his building as well?
Nick from the building department might be able to 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 talk I know he's been doing various inspections with our building official Randy's been over there and Nick I know you get probably.
It's pretty close.
Yeah some some updates.
Mr. Banda you there?
Nick you're still on mute if you're trying to there you go.
All right about a month or a little longer maybe excuse me it's up to him it's up to us it's up to get done sorry.
Yeah I think he's actively trying to lease it right now. Oh fire chief mind fire chief.
Working he's working through the units and stages if you think about the back building I believe there's six or eight units that he's working on trying to get approval on he's working off the punch list from building and fire then he'll work on the the front building along university this is all on the third floor would be the next phase and he's working to build out the lower phases right now so I don't want to speak for him but it looks like he's phasing occupancy at this time throughout the building.
Okay thank you.
Okay next is to new business for referral miscellaneous public comment Brian.
Hello I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay thank you we have a receipt of the check register report and the city manager's update Mr. City Manager.
Thank you mayor pull my sheets together where did I write down a few things here so there are of course I'm flipping to the last page here we had two or three check registers let me get to the back packet it was on the 16th and actually it was just the 16th that we had for this this packet there's one that I'm looking at right now that will be in our January packet for our check register overall we I did want to just highlight that we do have upcoming in January our budget meeting on Saturday the 8th and then the following Saturday we do have also our emergency tabletop exercise so staff will be getting additional information to counsel on those two items and other than that would just like to wish everybody a happy holidays please be safe and have good new years as well.
Thank you madam clerk.
Same here Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing thank you.
Mr. Banda anything else are you back is he out?
Yeah more good thank you.
Anything for the good of the order?
No also thank you.
Councilmember Albert.
I just wanted to thank administration that my peers on city council for a very good year I think you know we're into year two of dealing with the pandemic and we've had to pivot quite often even how we're meeting in this in the in our chambers here but I want to thank everybody for working together healthy discussion during all of our meetings and wish everybody and their families happy holidays and a healthy new year thank you.
Thank you mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah thank you I just wanted to thank the DPW and all the workers we had our first kind of snow out there and my husband noted that as he drove from Rochester to other communities Rochester was consistently the clearest road so thank you thank you also noticed you made a nice donation to Rainbow Connection so it's great to see everyone pulling together and giving back and supporting a great local nonprofit here so wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a healthy new year.
Thank you councilmember Gould anything tonight?
Happy holidays everybody.
Thank you councilmember Sage.
Thank you Mr. Mayor I just had a follow-up with the city manager appreciate the the information you provided to us and the manager's report and one of one of the articles actually was interesting the Soul Smart initiative and I was curious if we've reached out to any of those four communities Ann Arbor Lansing Grand Rapids or Ypsilanti and is it something we might be considering for any of our city owned and managed buildings?
We did not to those specific communities but our engineers when we were building our public works building did have some of those practices and that was noted again at the planning commission meeting you heard me talk about that ICMA the city manager group actually has partnered up with I guess now one of the two foundations that have now merged so we felt that that Soul Smart component is actually in your master plan update so that's where we felt we needed to provide some additional background information for you guys but I don't know if either our current planners or the planners that are helping us with the master plan have reached out I know two of them have worked with those particular communities I believe Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti so if they haven't talked to them they probably helped them actually create it as they've worked they work for those communities but I'm happy to to follow up and see if there's any lessons learned or anything that we can find out from either those communities or you know their dealings with the two planer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then other than that wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year and look forward to seeing you next year. Very good thank you councilmember Harrison.
Just like to wish everyone a happy holidays make sure that you stay safe out there as we all gather together for this new year.
Good thank you councilmember Peterson.
Just two things one thank you to the DPW for cleaning off the all the grates and also for the street sweeper that went through the streets are looking really good in time for more snow and then I really wanted to and I met to last meeting thank DePonyo and their contractors for the really awesome job they did at the finishing of the roadway so they are like smooth from the old to the new with no bumps no nothing and it's really hard to find that in a lot of areas where they do the new roads so it's very impressive especially with the concrete inlays that they did as well so that was great and also I want to just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas happy holidays happy new year looking forward to 2022.
Very good thank you so I have a couple things first I just myself my father and my wife went to the Irish Dance True Christmas Show at the OPC and it was a wonderful show and the OPC puts on a great event and it was well attended and things so it's good to hopefully get things going back to normal even though we might not be getting back to normal I want to say hope councilmember Gould gets well and good luck to councilmember Sage with his upcoming knee surgery hope that all goes well we are going to postpone the council having a drink night till hopefully when covid is a little better and I am I promise I am not shirking my responsibility to buy the first round at that event.
Fiscal year end.
Fiscal year end I know we I am a minority now with all these Michigan State people around but wish Michigan well in the upcoming football game so go blue and I just wanted to say I was out Saturday night in the town and downtown Rochester was booming and I think Rochester to me it just showed is is we are very successful city we're a very prosperous city things are going well we're very blessed in this city and I'd just like to thank everybody in this room administration and all my peers on the city council I think we've all have a little bit to do with that helping that as as leaders so thank you for all your support this year thank you for your hard work I know you guys put out a lot of time and energy and so I appreciate that and on behalf of the city thank you everybody and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody and we'll see you guys next year thank you.